Have meetings and watch our school succeed. Before we do anything, I'd like to thank Scott for conducting the meeting last month. I was occupied, but I did listen on Zoom or something and everything was wonderful. So, thank Dr. Miller. So, we'll start the meeting tonight with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. So, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. The first order of business is select a board chairman and I'll turn the gavel over to Dr. Stanley and you can...
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And first, let me say thank you for your service as our chairman for the past year. You've done a great job and our first order of business this year will be to find a new chairman. So, at this time, I'll open the floor to nominations.
I'd like to nominate Scott Miller.
Second.
So, we've got a nomination, we've got a motion, and we've got a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor then of Dr. Miller becoming chairman, please...
I think we need to close nominations.
Okay. Close nominations.
That's no motion.
Okay. You have a motion to close nominations?
Motion.
Second.
All right. So, at this time, I would ask for all those in favor of Dr. Miller becoming new chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Dr. Miller.
I too would like to thank Barry's leadership and he's always done a good job for our school board. Thank you for your service, continued service. Now, we have to ask for nominations for the vice chairman. I would like to nominate Ann Parker. So, I ask if there's a second. All right. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate David Phillips.
Second.
I have a second, okay. And any other nominations? Mr. Chairman, I move the nominations be closed.
Second.
All right. All in favor of closing the nominations, say aye.
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 All in favor of David Phillips being vice chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. A motion carries. Okay, Dave, thank you for your serving. All right. Appointment of clerk and deputy clerk. You got any...
Mr. Chairman, we recommend that the appointment of Michelle McClanahan and Tracy Dobbins as clerk and deputy clerk for 2025.
Do we need a motion for that? Okay. Then I ask for a motion accepting... Motion.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Good. It's good that you're still with us. Committee appointments. I guess we have Governor's School, Barry, you've been doing that. Do you still want to do that or does anybody else want to... Yeah, I'm fine. Okay. Anybody else voice your opinion if you want to do something different? STEM Academy?
I got it.
You're good with it? Okay. Laurel. I've asked to step down from that, so we need somebody to do that. I approached Karen. Are you interested?
I'm willing to add that, yes.
Okay. And then we have recreation. Was that Ann?
And David said that he'd be interested. I was unable to attend about half the meetings this year, so I felt horrible.
Okay. So, David's going to be, you're going to do recreation?
Yep.
And then we have joint committee.
I plan to stay. You guys are good with that?
Okay. So, are we all good with the committee appointments? All right. Do we need a... I don't think we need a motion on those.
I don't think so.
Yeah. So, the only change was law... The only one that's changing is moral. Recreation. And recreation. And Karen, if I can do anything to help you with that position, don't hesitate to reach out.
Great.
Scott?
Yes?
I mean, the agenda says committee appointments to be approved by the board, so I guess do we need to do a motion and approval for that, for the appointments?
Did you make a motion, David?
I'm making a motion, yeah.
Second. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the committee appointments. Any other discussion? All in favor of the committee appointments, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Meeting date and time. We've always been doing it on the second Monday at 6:30. Any objections to that? We have a couple of changes and has anybody, did everybody get this?
This is just you and I have it right here.
So, it's always the second Monday, except in March, we have two meetings. And then April, we usually change it because of spring break and we're going to do it on April 21st. I'm going to write that down. And then in July, we usually change it because of the Fourth of July holiday and so we'll be doing it on July 21st.
What's the March dates?
March is, March 10th and March 24th.
That's the budget meeting. So, do we need a motion on that?
Okay. Any questions about our meeting times? Mr. Chairman, I move we have our meetings on the second Monday every month except for March. We'll have March 10th and 24th and April, we'll have April 21st and July, we'll have that on the 21st of July.
A second, that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? If not, all indicate approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Anybody asked to speak? Okay. All right. All right. All right, then, next agenda item, approval of the December 9th meeting minutes. I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the minutes? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Anybody asked to speak? Okay. All right. All right. All right, then, next agenda item, approval of the December 9th meeting minutes. I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the minutes? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. So, payment of the bills. I have to pass the torch on this one.
Dr. Miller, I have approved, I have reviewed the bills and make a motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
And we need to buy Amazon stock.
All right. All in favor of paying the bills, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Motion carries. Donations. Mrs. McClanahan.
Tonight, you have a list of donations for your approval unless you have any questions, I'd ask that you approve them as presented.
I believe it was like $23,000 or...
Twenty-three thousand.
Yes.
That's incredible.
I would just, before we actually make that motion, I would just like to thank everybody who makes those donations and especially in my district down in Brookville, we have some very considerate and benevolent donors and we just, you can express our thanks and gratitude and I'm sure the kids benefited. So, all right. With that being said, a motion to approve acceptance of the donations.
Motion.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All indicate, all approve by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Supplemental appropriations.
You have two supplemental appropriations for approval unless you have any questions on those, I'd ask that you approve them.
Ask for a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great. All right. Consideration of designation of alternative staff member attending board meetings.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend Dr. Amy Hale, Assistant Superintendent, is my designee in case I can't be here for some reason.
I don't think that'll be a problem. Do we need a motion on that?
Yep.
Motion to approve. Dr. Hale is our backup.
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Gary and a second by Mr. Jones. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Personnel report. Sunley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a relatively short personnel report in front of you this month. We did send out last week the intent forms of our certified staff which are asking our certified staff who plans to retire or possibly resign for next year, so next month's report will be a little bit different. But for this month, we are in good shape for certified and classified staff. If you have any questions, I can answer them, otherwise I'd ask that you approve it as written.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Sunley?
Do you want to plug your job fair?
Yes, I was going to do that after approval. I have it on my notes.
All right.
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Need a second?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
So, if I could, take another minute to let you know about our career fair. It's going to be on February 8th. Unfortunately, as you know, we've had it at Brookville High School for the last two years, but I think that might be a bit much with everything going on right now. Ms. White might not appreciate us trying to squeeze in there. So, Mr. Slater and Mr. Marks at Leesville Road Elementary have graciously agreed to host us. They're really excited about it, actually. We went the other day to look at the building and Mr. Slater met us and walked us around and eager to let us use the building in whatever capacity we need to. As a reminder, it is for certified and classified staff, so we're going to have all of our principals set up in the gym at Leesville Road with a table and their presentations and decorations and all of that good stuff to tell about the great things going on at their schools. We'll also have in the hallway leading to the library, if you're familiar with Leesville Road, we'll have transportation, classified staff, substitutes. Ms. Heiner will be there with our school nutrition program. We'll have the library set up where people can apply. We'll have other recruitment tables. Our mentor coordinators will be there. The special ed department will be there to help recruit special ed teachers. Our benefits department will be there. So, lots of people to greet and welcome and hopefully recruit lots of great people into Campbell County. So, if you are available to come, we'd love to have you stop by on the 8th at Leesville Road.
Eight to 12?
Nine to 12.
Nine to 12.
Yes.
How is it advertised?
We've done lots of Facebook posts, obviously, social media. We have sent emails and flyers to all the surrounding colleges. LU sends a long list of applicants that just graduated. We've sent that out. I'll do a media release here in another week or so. Actually, it's at the end of this week. We also send a school messenger email to everybody that's in our Infinite Campus email group, so lots of different ways.
Good.
Yeah.
Well, that's great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Non-resident tuition. Mrs. McClanahan.
Tonight, you have a list of students for approval as non-resident students. If you have any questions, I'll answer those, otherwise I ask you to approve it as presented.
Ask for a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phillips and a second by Ms. Vaughn. Sorry. Any questions or discussion? All right. I'll ask for approval. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. State and local statement of economic interest.
Academic calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Academic calendar, I'm sorry. Dr. Hale.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. You have before you the same calendar, the draft that was shared in December at that meeting, and this is our student calendar for next school year. Just to remind you, it's very similar to this school year. It does include a fall break and it also does align with part of CVCC's fall break, which is of benefit since we have many students who take part of those programs. A teacher workday is included each nine weeks along with PD day and that has been appreciated by our teachers and staff. We do have 90 days each semester, which is important to reach our 140 hours that are required per credit for our secondary courses. And also the two weeks at Christmas, that was very positive. This year, one of our challenges, of course, has been the weather. Since we have returned, we have done better as far as getting in school, but I know that has created a little bit of working with the schools with exams. So, we have worked through some of those things and will continue to do so, but we did do the majority of our SOL testing prior to winter break, knowing that's not what's best for kids who would need to take a test. So, we do feel this is a good calendar. It's a nice compromise without starting too early, but also still giving us the breaks in that time and also allows us to keep our time to graduate at the VINE Center. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have with this calendar.
I'll just share for the board, I had one of my parents ask what we would have to do to get the final week of the first semester prior to the Christmas break and Dr. Hale prepared a tremendous response and I just, I'll let you do it instead of me bumbling through it, but...
Sure, and that has come up because when we transitioned to a block schedule, it is a challenging, we used to have two weeks when we came back, which was harder, and some of our other school divisions that are on a block schedule, meaning they change classes at the end of the semester due and prior, but they also start earlier and some of, they have anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes extra each school day. So, there would be some significant changes that would need to be considered for that. That is something we will definitely listen to, to determine if it was a change we were considering, we need to be fair for training, for vacations, for all of the things, and we need to signal that really in the fall of next school year if that was a direction to go. One of the biggest challenges, and it continues to be a challenge, is booking the VINE Center. We have had that weekend for a very long time and there, you could graduate during the week, but I also know senior families really want to have that opportunity to travel and to see their senior graduate. Additionally, our schools are not a great option for graduation when one of them is under major renovation. So, we appreciate that the VINE Center has been great for our families. We don't have to limit tickets, but there are a lot of factors that go into that. Definitely take that feedback into consideration and again, we would be, if we were to consider that, it would be for not this school year coming up, but the one after that, absolutely. And it's a great point. Nobody anticipated an additional few days off due to snow either, but I appreciate the hard work of our faculty and staff to get students settled so that they could finish this semester out, which we will finish tomorrow.
So, with the block system, you come back and you got, tried to get all the SOLs taken care of prior.
Yes, sir.
So, then they come back and they have one more week of the semester.
Correct.
So, is other in-class testing going on or...
We have exams for those who need to take them. So, this is for our high school courses, so they would be doing, finishing up projects, finishing up any work and then taking exams. So, we had our first two exams Friday and we'll finish our next two tomorrow.
I forget, is this our second or third year doing blocks?
It's actually for the entire division, that was '21, '22, but for most of our schools, it was '23, '21. So, we've been on it now for about four years.
Okay. So, having said that, how is coming back for just one week working?
This is our first year with one week. It's been two in the past, so it's actually like a good middle ground for us to see and also, again, moving the SOL testing prior was a major change that needed to happen.
Okay.
So, that's been of benefit. We'll tweak the exam schedule, get that straight and be ready, but again, we'll definitely take feedback and then if so, in the fall, that would really be something for us to come back, to look at how early would we need to start if we decide that and also if there would need to be additional time added to the day.
The other question I have is on these two-hour delays, is that taken out of the first block or do you divide that between the two blocks?
We typically divide it between the blocks. Now, I did give high schools a little bit of flexibility because they need it to review with their students, right? So, they needed some flexibility to do that. The only exception is some of our bus, some of our programs don't run, so like for session, tech center students don't come here. So, we have to work and be flexible and adaptable with the weather and we, everyone's done a good job of that.
And we're on time tomorrow.
Yes. It's our second day being on time since we've returned, so we're excited.
Even if they see some black ice out there?
Be careful.
Yes.
Be careful.
Any other questions?
Okay. So, this is the final draft that we vote on.
This is the draft, so it is up for an action item.
All right. Any other questions for Dr. Hale? If not, then I would ask for a motion to approve our academic calendar.
I make a motion to approve our academic calendar. That's presented.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Tanner and David. And Mr. Phillips, second. Okay, great. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Hale.
Thank you.
Now, Mrs. McClanahan, a reminder about our statement and local state, state and local statement of economic interest.
Just a reminder, they are due February 3rd. Please get them to meet by that date.
Show of hands. Amazed on them?
I seem to get it too.
All right. All right. Moving on. Elementary behavioral support. Dr. Hale and Dr. Wilson.
Good evening again, Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, we wanted to talk to you a little bit about elementary behavioral supports and our plans for the upcoming school year. So, really wanted to give you some information as well as some data to support some decisions and also what that process will look like. So, our current goals, and this really aligns with the work that we're doing in Student Services with our school-based mental health grant as well as prior to that, is we are working to have a school climate that supports mental health and wellness, that also enhances student well-being, minimizes mental health turnover, but really this idea that we need to build strategies that we can support and be sustainable for our students. That is part of the work that we are required to do, but it's really what's best for our students and for our staff. Additionally, we will always maintain high behavioral expectations and work to provide those supports for our teachers and students. So, that foundation for us has not changed, but we also need to recognize that we have some other processes and systems that would be of benefit for us to consider moving forward. And I will say, tonight, we are going to be looking at some data, talking about Cornerstone Learning Center, and we have some people in this room who have been instrumental to the work of Cornerstone. And so, this is in no criticism to that work. We are proud of the work that our teachers, our staff and our administrators have done at Cornerstone, but also recognize that we've started to make some shifts and so how can we continue to better the work that they've really honestly already started for us? At this point, I will let Dr. Wilson explain a little bit more as he has been transitioning this year and working in Student Services as well.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hale. So, when I got in Campbell County this summer, started having conversations with people about what they felt was working and what they felt could be improved upon and where they could, where we could better support them. So, when I went around and talked with elementary principals, what they boasted about and talked about a lot were some of these different levels of support that they built within their school to help students and families. They've done an extensive job continuing to kind of build and build these different tiers of support within the school. The one request they did have is maybe an additional set of resources or support for those students that have reached that kind of tier three where they worked through and now what else could we do? They felt they could keep all these students in their building, keep them in their, part of their community and part of their school family if they had just a little more support. In addition, a really big focus on early intervention and kind of what that may look like if we could expand early intervention because just like reading, behavior is learned and the sooner we can intervene, the sooner we can put things in place, the more productive change we could see. So, talking with all the elementary principals, they really asked what could, what could the central office staff or what we could do as a county to provide that additional behavioral support to continue to reinforce those high expectations and those structures and build on those structures that they've already started to develop within their school. So, one of the things that kept coming up is transition. So, anytime students are removed from a school building and have to transition back, that's difficult and that doesn't matter what age, but particularly some of our earlier intervention, some of our earlier students, elementary students transitioning back and having to develop routines. Really, in that elementary age, we're learning to do school, right? And if we're learning to do school in an environment that's adapted, like our Cornerstone environment where it's a shorter day, it's a higher student, teacher to student ratio and then we're transitioning back, a lot of those transitions weren't as successful for our elementary kids when they were coming back from Cornerstone. So, the feedback we heard from principals was that modified day and some of the expectations weren't easily replicated when they would return to an elementary school. So, in short, the best transition is no transition. So, if there's a possibility of retaining these students within our school building with additional support, then that would be ideal, right? And so, continue those conversations throughout and then starting to look at how we currently support those students within Campbell County. So, currently, you know, we do have an alternative program that goes K-5 and when I looked at the last four years of data, we've supported 63 students in that program over the last three and a half years, right? When you dig a little deeper, out of those 63, 31 of them were either removed for private day or transferred out. And then 10 more that were going back would, ended up back at Cornerstone. Kind of reiterating the point that some of our transition skills aren't the things that were developed in that setting and really kind of focusing in on what could we do different to meet principals where they want. They're talking about having more support in their building and if we're looking at our current practices, you know, we are averaging a daily attendance of 10 to 12 over the last four years and a staff of six people that we could really maybe utilize in a different fashion. And to give all credit to our school administrators in the elementary ranks, the referrals to Cornerstone's program have gone down dramatically over the last three and a half years. You know, you can see here from '21, '22, '23, '24, where we were about '23 in '22, '21, '22 to '25 in that year there. And then since then, I think our schools have really made a big push to build programs within their own school to retain those students because most students require a short-term intervention to learn a behavior or learn a structure and then they're successful within their own school building. So, where this year, we've had nine, right? So, we look at the number of referrals that are actually reaching that point where our administrators feel they need that extra help and that's really gone down over the years as they continue to build those supports within their school. So, we started to look at what restructuring that elementary support to meet those needs, one, focusing on giving principals what they ask for. How can we provide some extra support? We looked at a model that's already kind of started here in Campbell County with behavioral support specialists and some of our elementary schools that have been traveling among the seven, helping develop intervention plans and that's become increasingly successful to the point where some of our elementary schools have had no students that have been referred to to Cornerstone because of the systems they've built in place with these behavior specialists that are helping to plan. So when we look at restructuring and we talk about how we meet that goal along with continuing the early intervention and expanding it to really support those students at their earliest age, we've talked about, our team talked about, kind of made a decision to restructure and take those current positions and take them from the isolation in the, in the general location at Cornerstone and push them back out into the schools to help, help those administrators, as an intervention specialist within, with their own locality. So those individuals would be able to coordinate functional behavioral plans, create behavior intervention plans, provide classroom support and school-wide support. So not only for individual students who may need that time during the day, but could help teachers and support in the classroom if there are other individual kids. So collaborate closely with families and educators to kind of really sum up that educational community and keep them in, keep them in their family community while supporting their behaviors. In addition, expanding what is our early intervention model, a highlight of the data that we call, that we kind of went through over the past four years, is when we get students identified early in that kindergarten to second grade range, we really saw great benefits. So those students being relocated to an alternative placement that is in a full-day kind of setting would allow them to prepare better for transitions and give us time to do necessary assessments if they are students who end up needing an IEP or a 504 or some other type of behavioral plan before they reintegrate. We saw a lot of success when we were able to remove those students and have early intervention. So continuing and expanding that early intervention program to a K-2 model and really focusing on early intervention for those students while taking some of the personnel that are currently working with the older students in our Cornerstone and pushing them out into the elementary setting to be those intervention specialists that our principals are asking for. So in light of that, to eliminate some of the transition thoughts that we were talking about with the shorter day, different resources, we would move that early intervention program to Concord Elementary School, where the students could have access to a normal school day while being supported in a smaller teacher-to-student ratio within a classroom setting and really follow what we have now as an early intervention model, but expanding it to a K-2 model. But really work on behaviors and support those kids and get assessments in an environment where they could have access to resources and utilize other assets at a school building. So in this change, by reallocating these positions, we meet the needs that we've heard from our administrators. Having that additional support for a population where behaviors may require individualized attention and having those personnel that are trained to do that and minimize those transition times that we see have not been as successful between schools and moving back and forth between localities. Keeping those students in their environment, building that supportive culture, and through the reallocation of already current staffing, it's a cost-effective restructuring that allows us to support, put the support where it's needed and where our administrators say we need it most.
So just in conclusion, we really feel that this is an opportunity to support more students. The early intervention would be a targeted program for those K-2 students who are of most need at Concord, but then also by utilizing these intervention design specialists, we're able to support behaviors in all elementary schools and being able to help them. It also aligns with our school-based mental health grant. Our second one that we received, it comes into effect now, this month, is when we actually can start receiving those funds. And this is a five-year grant that is meant to target, we're actually able to use it for pre-K through two. And we know that is critical. Early intervention is critical for students, and we are excited about what work we can do with that grant as well to support our most needed students there. So again, we see this a benefit for, for all students and for all of our elementary schools, but are happy to answer any questions that you might have. And I know it's a lot, so you may be processing it as you're, as you are looking at it. Of course, we will share this presentation with you.
So our third, fourth, and fifth would stay in their building?
They would. And the only exception, there wa, the only exception to that is if there is a student that has some type of offense that is required by law, that you are not allowed, then of course, we will, we will do that. But as far as our students that are three through five in Cornerstone, currently, we have?
Four.
Four. And those are scheduled to return to their school?
Those placements are currently, some of them are actually placements based on a team decision, where we're looking at creating plans for transition. So their time, but a lot of time in elementary setting in particular is dictated by Virginia code. So even when we have kids that are long-term suspended, the vast majority of the last four years have been for 30 days or less. And so when we are looking to work on skills, looking to work on what deficits they have, transitioning a student typically takes, you know, four to 12 days because going through the process, and then they're out of school for 30 total. And then your transition back within three weeks to transition, often the time is more detrimental than the actual suspension as far as looking at skill deficits. So I think given the timeframe, as we utilize more often this team process, which a lot of our schools is building, place students in different settings, place students in different programs, we really control the timeline, we really work on those skill deficits and return kids back to a school in a more productive transition manner.
Okay, one more question. And I, I agree, leaving them at, at the schools, do we have place for them at their schools? Like I know some of our elementary schools are pretty tight, so in order to keep them at our home schools, have we planned for that? That our administrators have identified locations that they feel like are appropriate and classroom location?
Part of what we'll be working through is how to, what schools the intervention design specialists will serve. Because in addition, we already have two behavior coaches that do work, do great work. So really expanding that, so we will work to identify those. There is space at Concord for the, the early intervention classroom, so that, that space has been identified.
I'm more concerned about leaving them at certain schools. Do we have the space, right?
Leesville Road and Tomahawk.
Correct. Exactly, that's why I'm asking, specifically those two. Is there space?
Brookneal are getting this.
Yeah, Brookneal.
I mean, we're getting this trailer there.
Just as snug. Yeah, I mean, I think that's just, I, I think we could figure it out. I think making sure that there's a plan in place that we know we have space, right? That's appropriate for them, they're not shoved in a closet, they're not shoved in a back book room.
No, absolutely, we want to make sure that they do.
That we've got appropriate place for them as their transition.
Absolutely.
That would be my only concern. I was like, daddy, having them at home.
Absolutely.
But the K through two, we would send to Concord? How long a day is that gonna be?
So they're gonna have a, the, like a full day of elementary school. We've worked with transportation to be a little bit creative about routes and what that can look like. And keep in mind that you already have existing structures in place in the Russburg area, you know? But yes, we, we do have a plan for that with transportation. And also some creative ideas of ways to maybe grow some of our bus drivers. If we're looking at transportation, that would be in a van and then expanding upon that.
But if you sent a child from Alta Vista to Concord, that's a 40-minute bus drive.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, the bus, that would be a drive from that. There would probably, there would need to be a kind of like a hub location in Alta Vista, and then they would come. But also, it depends on the student, because it could be that they could be picked up at their house. You know, we're talking one student from that area. But we have been in talks with transportation about being able to serve all four areas.
Yeah, I'm good with that, but I'm just saying.
It would be a longer ride, correct.
Every time the kid's gonna have to start.
I know that there is, correct. There's a bus that is at 6:15 on Lynnbrook that I pass often, so I know there are buses out, correct. Some of our buses that serve our, some of our students with disabilities, they are out quite early as well. But yes, we would have to keep that in mind with the travel time.
And Concord's natural time is already later than we in Campbell and Alta Vista. So they would probably be a similar time getting on their transportation with a, later start to the school day.
But Stuart, you're adding, you're adding an hour and a half a day for the kids to ride a bus.
I mean, the kid for transportation purposes, yes, depending on where they were located in the Alta Vista zone.
We couldn't put it in Yellow Branch centrally located?
They do not have the space necessarily for that. And then there is a benefit of Concord and the resources there that were already identified with their early childhood that they have as far as our, that serves our students with disabilities.
Okay, thank you.
Just a little curious, when, when we started Cornerstone for the elementary, there was a need. And so, so what has changed? Is it mainly that we actually have more staff that we can do this than what we had when we, when we formed the Bay, Cornerstone for the young children?
I know from, from talking to others, the, the main concern with Cornerstone Elementary, we were just putting them on homebound, you know? And we knew that that was not the best solution for young students. The number of referrals has dramatically gone down. But keep in mind too, the state code dictates that you cannot suspend, but so much for an elementary student as well. So that along with, I think there's also been a shift in philosophy of behavior is taught and learned, right? And so in my school, I can help influence that behavior, especially at the elementary level. That has always been there, I think that has just continued to grow. And also, I will say, the approach of our behavior coaches and some of the work that some of them have already done to develop these behavior teams that look at it through a team process to really identify and do the intervention that is needed.
So I, I, I think it's somewhat philosophical, but it's also, you know, a reflection of the additional staffing that we do have in place. We've got people in the building through our, through our harvest grants, mental health grants that, that can work with kids during the school day and help get them back into the classroom better. And when we're having these conversations, I mean, I, I really had a couple of things that I, I said, we, we gotta maintain. One, high standards in the classroom in terms of academic behavior. Create, continue to have a great environment in our schools. We gotta continue to make sure that we're supporting teachers when they're having challenging students. And then, third thing, kind of escapes me at the moment, but, but we gotta maintain those high expectations. Overall, I think you would see that our change in philosophy has led to us going from 12, 13 years ago being, I, I got a slide I'm gonna show you tomorrow night, basically, that says our graduation rates have gone from where we were ranked 13th in the region of schools with graduation rates. We've kind of shifted our philosophy over the years, and now we're number one, okay? And we have the highest graduation rates in the region, and that's, that's our principals wanting to keep that. Oh, that was the third thing, is making sure that our principals were on board with what we're doing here and that we had their support, and, and, and we do. So, so those were important things to me before we moved forward and doing any type of shift like this. So disruptive behavior in the classroom, which is a distraction for the other kids, the other teachers, that's still gonna be adequately addressed with this model? That, that either the kids aren't gonna be paying for this extra intervention with this one student?
Absolutely. I would say it's probably gonna be more supportive because there will be an intervention tied to that versus necessarily just a disciplinary consequence.
You guys good with this?
I, 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 I've been sitting here like with a muzzle on. I understand, I understand the rationale. But now, and Mr. Bennett's been sitting back there. But like Dr. Miller said, discipline cases that are referred, are they gonna be put into student population at Concord or no?
No, they will be in the, if they are in the early intervention program, they are in that classroom. One benefit that is considered is that they're in at least an elementary school building, right? You know, so then that is replicable to when I go back to my home school. Because the last thing we want is for our students to feel like they don't belong, right? And however, there are cons, there are consequences for your behavior, I'm, I very much understand that. But we know that, that that is key, that early intervention is key. But no, that would be a classroom to itself, that would have the resources and the support from the staff that are trained to do this work.
And there may be two to five in that classroom or, I mean, am I?
Correct, yeah, I mean, you're talking K, K-2.
So, that's just K-2?
Just K-2.
Yeah, just.
Two to five for the whole K-2 group or per?
It could be more, I mean, the, the numbers, you know, could be larger than that. But it would be bare minimum, we would have one elementary teacher along with a special education teacher.
So we're going back in school suspension? Pretty much.
Not necessarily, because they are still not, they're not able to, they're, they're in a classroom with resources there. That's still separate, it's just within an elementary school.
So our third through fifth would still be pulled out if their behavior was not being able to be there?
If there needs to be an intervention, correct.
To transition them back in with appropriate behavior demonstration.
Correct, they are, they would be able to do that. The exception, as I will say, would be, again, those, those behaviors that are at that threshold of the code that require removal will be different.
Then we would pull them and not put up with it.
Correct.
And we'll still have the resources here to?
Yes, secondary will be here, six through 12, along with our ISEP and GED.
Yeah, but our third, fourth, and fifth?
No.
They would be in the building in a separate room, pulled, so they're not causing the behaviors that got them in trouble to be in.
They would be addressed at the school level.
Okay.
Unless it was extreme, at which point, then they're removed from the school setting by requirement.
So, so, so like our schools that are packed now, our elementary schools that are packed, Brookneal, Leesville Road, Tomahawk, where are they going?
So when we're talking about these students, that are three through five, we said there are four students across the entire division. Four, currently, currently. So that's not many that we are talking about.
I understand that, but they gotta have a space somewhere.
Correct, yes, so we will then identify those spaces to have that, correct.
So there may be one kid in a classroom with a aide or a teacher or something?
Yeah, so these would be the intervention design specialists working with that student, correct.
But your numbers will probably go up because the principals will see that they have this ability. Why not use it? I mean, I think it's a good thing, I mean, that would be a good thing.
Where, where, one of the things that's a positive of this work and that's been done is the idea of a team, right? And so that it's a team process, looking at this student. And these are highly trained individuals, you know, that, that look at behavior to determine that. And so it potentially, yeah, there could be, there could be need. We know, we know, it's, it's K, it's really K-1, K-2. That's what we're talking about as far as extreme behaviors in addition to pre-K, which is different. But yes, we would, we would obviously monitor those numbers and be watching. We also know sometimes it's because a student just needs kind of like a, a place to, to continue to do that work while we figure the other things out. Does that student need a plan? Does that student, student need a 504 plan? What's going on here to be able to address that? And, and the K, the, the K through one, two program that has been at Cornerstone has been very successful. Okay, so it's taking that same work.
So this, is, is Mr. Bennett responsible for, for these or?
So Mr. Bennett will be the principal. He will also have support. And so he, he will, he is the principal at Concord, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Bennett, but he, he has shared with me last week, he's very excited.
And honestly, that was the first question I asked, would they work for me or would they be working with somebody else? And they told me they would be my teachers, so I appreciate that. That's all.
So how many staff will be relocating? Did you mention it, was it six or how here, relocating from here?
Correct, so we will have, again, the elementary position and special education position that would be posted for the early intervention program at Concord. And then also, we have the intervention design specialist. We've encouraged our Cornerstone staff to apply for any of those things that they would like to be considered for once they are posted and be in communication with them. And they, everyone is guaranteed a job next year, okay? That has been communicated, we are committed to that, yes, that will happen. So that if, maybe I don't want to do that, right? Maybe I don't want to go do the early intervention program at Concord, then there will be other opportunities, and we will do our very best to honor their requests.
So this is gonna start, when is this gonna start?
It would be for next school year. We thought, we really wanted to have this meeting to then continue on because it will require quite a bit of work, planning, processes, and personnel to, personnel work.
And then how are we gonna measure success compared to how we're measuring it now?
So really, we're looking at transitions, you know? So we want to be able to do the intervention, see the intervention be successful. And ultimately, the student gets what they need, and then the transition ideally, you know, to their, to their home school. But also understanding if we, we do find that a student needs something different, then we will address that. But it's really gonna be tailored to the students and their needs.
Good. Sounds like a good plan.
Yeah. So we'll be happy to get this presentation to you, and of course, we'll be happy to answer any questions as well after this meeting, okay?
Are you having other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, yes. Okay, so we've been doing most of our stuff. Dr. Stanley, we'll have to.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank staff. Last few days, coming back from the break, obviously, we've had a lot of weather, bad weather. And I, I know that Mr. Fisher, our, our director of maintenance, said that he had three days off over the break where he did not get a phone call, whether it be a power outage or a leak. And I know last night, as I was settling in, getting ready to watch football game, he was getting a call because we had a leak, a chiller leak in that William Campbell, so he had to go deal with that. So just want to take my hats off to those guys. They work extremely hard. Dr. Rannella, he's put his eyes on the road quite a bit lately and watched the forecast. And I think that we were fortunate to make good calls and get kids in school as much as possible. So thank them. I think our teachers had a good workday today. They got to come in a little bit late just because of some, some of the road conditions. But it was a productive day. And then I wanted to remind you that we are off again next Monday for Martin Luther King Day, so. Last week, we had a training that took place for our STEM plus M programs that are, that are, I've told you in the past that we are putting in these STEM plus M programs at our middle schools. We've got our labs set up at Alta Vista Combined and Russburg Middle School, and they look fantastic, okay? So as we get into second semester, we'll start coming up with a plan for how we can do the lab at William Campbell and Brookville Middle. coming up with a plan for how we can do the lab at William Campbell and Brookville Middle School. And the plan is try to do that this second semester possibly. So we're ready to go into fall. But we had all of our teachers from all four schools come in and do training this past week and it went very well. They're very excited. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Is that a special class or that's, that's incorporated into all the classes?
It's a special class.
It's a special class, yes.
Those are STEM class. And so the students will go through different rotations, including research and design, electronics, 3D printing, CNC manufacturing, in addition to larger units and career connections. We are piloting it this year with seventh graders. So that is who is taking it. And then we will expand it to William Campbell as well as Brookville Middle next school year. It's very exciting.
And just to remind, we, we are a pilot for the state. And as Dr. Hell reminded me today, the company that we're doing with is DES, Diversified Education Systems. And they're saying we're the only school division in the nation. So, so this is a once in a lifetime opportunity where we are putting in state of the art labs. I mean, they are, they are providing everything and these labs.
It's amazing. You need to go look at it.
Yeah, I mean, these labs are potentially costing $600,000 per school. And they are picking up the tab because of the workforce shortage in the areas of STEM. So this is a, this is a big initiative. We're fortunate to have the partnership and we're really excited about it. So hopefully at some point, we can, we can get some more pictures, show you what the labs look like. Because it's a big deal for Campbell County schools. And I'm very excited about it. One other issue that we had that occurred this past week was many, many school divisions were notified that their student information system through Power School had been hacked, okay? There was a cyber attack through Power School. And we use Power School. Power School is basically a data, it's a, it's a cloud-based company that, that holds data, okay? For, and school divisions use Power School for various different things. You can use it for your, for your student information system. We have Infinite Campus, okay? You're familiar with that. You can use it for Student Messenger, which we do use Power School for Student Messenger. We do use Power School for some of our personnel programs. But the only system that was hacked in Power School, the only, only, I guess, program that they offered was the SIS, the Student Information System. So we were not impacted, okay? But I just want you to know that we do have a incident response team that, that's basically with technology in the event that we did have a, an attack. And we have a plan in place to deal with that sort of incident if it were to occur. Hopefully, it never does. But we do have a plan. And, and part of that includes immediately calling the Fusion Center. The Fusion Center is an organization that pretty much takes up the law enforcement side of it. And then we would call Vacor, our insurance company. They had a lot of meetings throughout the state. They had basically a big webinar for every system, school division that was involved. And we participated in it just because we wanted to learn from it. But they kind of lead next steps in a situation like that. So just wanted to bring that to your attention and reassure you that we were not impacted by it directly, but certainly got our attention and the things that came from it that we can learn from. I mean, the last thing that I have, I just wanted to remind you that tomorrow night, we have a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors. That will be at seven o'clock at the Hayward Building. And during that presentation, I know Mr. Rogers will talk to you about revenues for the county. And then when it gets to my part, I plan on talking to them about where we are as a division. A lot of information you already know. There might be one or two slides that you've not, but I don't think there'll be any surprises for you. Then I want to share with them a few slides from the Wolfert presentation about our enrollment projections and our current school capacities. Talk to them about some of the issues that we're facing there. Then give them an update on Brookville High School. Brookville High School, as I have told you in the past, it's, it's one day at a time. I mean, it's two steps forward, one step back. But we are making some progress. And Mr. Jones had a great idea. He recommended that maybe one of our meetings in, in February or even March, maybe we started earlier in the day, advertise that and I'll meet at Brookville High School and go for a tour. I will tell you that we've got some areas over there, like the kitchen and the cafeteria and the new gym that we're hoping will be ready in approximately a month. So I'd like for those to be ready before we go over. So we'll kind of play the date by ear, but I think that's a great idea and look forward to doing that. And then the last thing I will talk about during the meeting tomorrow night is, is the budget priorities for, for FY26. And as you all know, the biggest thing on our, on our list there is a 3% raise. We'd like to look at bus driver pay. Obviously, that's a concern and a priority for us. And then as we've talked in the past, if we've got money for additional positions, we'd like to look at expanding our gifted program. And hopefully, we'll have more direction for you in terms of budget at our next meeting. And that's, that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Stanley?
Oh, what?
All right. All right. The board will present different topics. And I think we'll start with Mrs. Parker down at this end.
Well, I, yes, I want to congratulate Dr. Miller. And you've done a wonderful job before. I'm looking forward to working with you as chair again this year. And I've got a lot of exciting things that I'm excited about anyway, going to the Virginia School Board Association Capitol Conference in Richmond towards the end of the month. I'm super excited about that. Talked to our legislators about legislative priorities that, that we did together as a board. And then the School Board Member Alliance is also, has a day in Richmond that I'll be attending. And also Brookville High School, again, is successfully going to be doing their field trip to the Capitol. So I'm super excited to be joining them with that as well. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Mr. Jones?
First thing I'd like to do is recognize Honorable Mike Lawhorn back in the back.
Yes.
Get him back. Secondly, I'd just like to take, you know, just from the bottom of my heart, just thank the generous citizens and churches and businesses that made Christmas a reality for a lot of our Campbell County kids that, that would not have really had the great Christmas they did. But I mean, just with the donations that were presented tonight, that's tremendous. But there were a lot of gifts given by churches and groups that they just, you know, stepped up and did it. And I just, just can't thank, thank the people enough that made it happen, made Christmas the real deal for a lot of our students that wouldn't, would have otherwise just had a dull, bland Christmas. So we just can't express our appreciation enough. Mr. Bennett moved Brookneal Christmas to Concord Christmas. I don't know what night it was, but my wife and I went with our two grandsons and had no idea what to be expecting when we got there. And we had to park across the road, which was the first thing that I didn't expect. But had a mob of people and had amazing entertainment and activities for the kids to do. And, and I was freezing to death and kids were running around with like shirt sleeves on, like just having the greatest time. But, but Mr. Bennett, thank you so much for bringing it to Concord. And I know a lot of businesses stepped up and, and helped you. And you got a lot of commitments for the upcoming year. So just thank you so much for bringing it because everybody had a great time and just really appreciated. And all I said, Brookville High School, or the site reports from Mr. Morriston, and, and it's really, it's really coming together. I mean, I mean, that's kind of makes it interesting to want to go see it because the pictures make it look like, you know, we're ready to serve food, but you.
Looks like it.
But go ahead. Will you go share the good news that you just shared with me right?
I am not going to share that with you. But I actually know, I will, the joke, I penciled over here to Barry and said, yeah, they apparently painted the athletic director's wall red, Russburg red, last week. And even the maroon paint was in the office. So that was, I, I got quite a few phone calls, not from people that I thought, like it was parents, you know, it was just, they all got wind of it. So it was quite a joke. We'll redeem ourselves at some point.
Dr. Shields and Barry Gossett.
Yeah, y'all, y'all did something. Y'all were cahoots at some point. But I mean, and they sent me a picture. It is Russburg red. It's not even like the primer for maroon. It is Russburg red. I have been assured that that will be rectified within the next 48 hours.
Mike, can you give us some devil's decals?
No, 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 no. I will personally repaint that wall if I have to. Jimmy, keep going. Are you good? Are you finished?
I'm done.
Was that your last? So I want to shout out to Brookville Middle School. They instigated what they call a MAP wall. So M A P, MAP wall for their MAP scores. And they had found huge success. The kids were super excited. They shared any kids that had made significant progress on their MAP scores or maintained their progress. And the kids were super engaged, super excited to see their name on there. It was a chance to recognize some kids who maybe didn't academically, you know, score on a continual basis, but were able to show significant progress. And so that was, that was a huge success for them and something they plan to continue to do.
Where was that?
At Brookville Middle School. At the middle school. Virginia Copper Big Extension facilitated poverty simulation today at Brookville Middle School. Took advantage of that morning with the professional development. And that was a nice, a nice program, a huge success, a lot of conversations on what we can do at the school there as teachers. And we had that with TLA when we did that. But it was a great opportunity to kind of see where some resources can be shared and some things that maybe we created some empathy for. So that was very nice to be invited to do that and to share that, that activity. Brookville High School, and I've got my phone up, so I'll make sure I do the right award. Want to celebrate Brookville Theater. Has got our fearless reader of Megan Emanuel, was the 2025 Virginia Thesbian Educator of the Year at the Virginia, the VAF conference. And our middle school, Brookville Middle Schools, Kayden Ferguson, was awarded the 2025 Middle School Theater Teacher of the Year by the Virginia Thespians. So that was quite a great accolade to our theater program at Brookville. And I had talked to Christine White earlier about, this week, about the cell phones and how that's been working, right? How's it been going as we've gotten back to school? What is a cellphone like? And she said, actually, it has been wonderful. The kids have put down their phones. They haven't had pushback and they have brought in board games. And so the kids are engaging in checkers and connect four and quick board games. And they are doing that instead of trying to track down things on social media to share or pictures. Their phones, of course, are gone and they are now engaging. And if they couldn't have a conversation, they can at least interact to a board game. So that has been a huge success. A few days they've been back and they're hoping that that continues. Even when they do eventually move into the new cafeteria, which we're hoping in the next couple of days, our seniors will get to do that. That's, that's the hope. And we'll remove any remnants of red Russburg paint.
Mr. Maddox?
I got two. But I'd like to thank the maintenance staff. I went to town Saturday afternoon and all our lots have been cleared. I mean, after the snow, I was amazed. I think Shane Dowdell was the main one on that. And I said this last month, but I want to say it again. I want to acknowledge Barry for his 25 years of commitment to the kids at Campbell County. The SBA, he was recognized 25 years. That's, that's a long time. That's all I got. Thank you, Barry.
Is it my turn, Scott?
Yes, your turn.
Okay. Couple of things. Russburg High School, this month, the theater department's putting on the Russburg Got Talent, Talent Show. They're hosting the Rising Freshmen on January the 28th. And I want to recognize Nala Bingham. She signed with National Letter of Intent to play for Liberty University. And they do have a FASFA night, January 15th, for moms and dads going down that college finance road. Some information to share there, which is good. And it did mention the cellphone policy being activated as well. No issues that I've heard of that yet either. So. And then at the middle school, Dr. Stanley has kind of mentioned the STEM plus M training that took place last week. And they were excited and honored to have that opportunity. They enjoyed the teacher workday today. And they have a musical performance, Matilda Junior, that they're putting on January 30th, 31st, and February 1st. So take advantage of checking that out.
When did you say the Russburg Got Talent thing was?
Uh, that is, he says this month. Sometime in January. I'll find out. Let you know.
To put it on the school. Yeah, come on, snow days.
All right. Well, I hope everybody had a fantastic Christmas break. I think the Christmas PTO events are starting to become one of my favorite things to do during the year. And I was able to help out at Leesville Road Santa Shop. And kids are so funny. They're so funny. And they just beamed with pride with their little trinkets that they picked out for each of their family members. I got so many like unsolicited hugs. They kind of jumped on me. And it was so sweet because younger ones, they couldn't read where it says like best grandpa ever or like best mom ever. So they'd be giving their moms things that say best grandpa ever. And at first I was like, hey buddy, you know, that, that says grandpa. Do you, do you want to get something that says mom? No, this is what she wants. And she's, we're going to pretend it says mom. Okay. But it was, that happened so often, I just gave up and I just accepted it. But it was fantastic to be able to experience and be part of that. I was also, you know, able to make it down to Brookneal, meander out of the Spring Hill District. And I went to their Christmas carnival. I had no idea what to expect, but oh my goodness. There were Christmas decorations everywhere, stations for games, cotton candy, hot chocolate, ornament making. There was food, a cakewalk, pictures with Santa and Mrs. Claus. They even had snow. And it reminded me of a Hallmark movie. And it definitely gave that Christmas feel with having that added detail of snow. So if you need a party thrown, apparently, those are the people to go to. So Yellow Branch PTO is hosting a fundraiser at Texas Roadhouse on January 28th. If you present a flyer on the PTO's Facebook page, the PTO will get 10%. Also, this week is Principals Appreciate, Principal Appreciation Week. So thank you to all of our principals and assistant principals for all you do.
Thank you. Well, speaking of principals, I, Barry sort of started a precedent, which I think we should turn into a legacy. And so I'm going to invite our administrators to give a shout out about their schools. And so who wants to go first?
Rock, paper, scissors.
I feel like Eric covered everything we had, very much.
Things are going fairly well for us. Obviously, we've only had students a handful of days since Christmas break, but attendance was fairly strong. We had nearly two, two-hour delays in one full day. Just to reiterate some of the things you guys said, our Christmas event was a success. A lot of support from the communities and very thankful for that. I also wanted to just give a general thank you to the community of Campbell County for the response to the family in Brookneal that lost their house to a fire. That was not a Brookneal or William Campbell student. However, I did receive messages from various people throughout the visit, just looking to extend their support. I know that that family was given a lot of support. So thank you guys for that.
How many, you want to share how many people attended your?
We had over 900 registered.
That's like the population of Brookneal.
That's insane.
Yeah, that's.
The number is Concord?
We had over, we had, we had about 700 RSVP. We know we had people show up who didn't, but that's, that's what we have.
Yeah.
So Keith, you say 901?
We have quite a few, but they had no clue what to expect.
Yeah. That's good.
You got to start somewhere.
I too am glad to see Mr. Lawhorn back, back, his shining, smiling face back there. So, yeah. Barry, again, I want to thank you for your leadership last year. And then I don't really have, I really don't have, I didn't hear from Mr. Carbright, so I don't have an update on William Campbell. Something has sort of been tossed around just a little bit that I just wanted to mention. And I sort of put my, bug in my ear at our, at the annual conference when we were in our region about student representation on the board. And, and I don't have a real big opinion on it, but I don't think there's any downside. And so I think we should sort of look into that, see how And so I think we should sort of look into that, see how that might work.
So Scott, actually, you know, I had forwarded the VSBA class, and Dr. Stanley was also on the call. I have like three and a half pages of notes I'm happy to share with you. I think everyone that did it, that has already had a student representative, had positive feedback. I mean, they had better numbers than I expected, I'll be honest with you, of how the board acted and interacted better, actually even, and how the students really appreciated the opportunity. And they actually, I think Clay was on at that, this time, they even said that their, they measured their outcomes, right, with the students being there, and that their outcomes were better and more well-rounded. I don't remember all the, the parameters, but I have a bunch of notes. I was very impressed. They had some great ideas about having a junior and a senior school rep so that it's not someone new just trying to get their feet under them for one year and then being gone. And, and also terms, you know, things like that too. And having a mentor on the board for them and having a mentor at Central for them and admin and a board member mentor. So I've got a bunch of notes. I thought it was great. I just hadn't reached out to Clay to see what he thought after. And I think Dr. Hale might have recorded it and taken a peek at it also, but I was very impressed.
Would you like to take lead on that and as far as exploring and then maybe with-
Yeah, chat with the admin and then come up with a proposal.
Yeah, yeah. Does the rest of the board agree with that or have an opinion or?
Well, I mean, my, my concern with it is if you, if you bring up, and don't think I'm against it, but so many of our meetings, if you go down the agenda of what we talk about, if, even if I'm a reporter, there ain't a lot to, you know, really say. That's really nice to talk about, but, but maybe, maybe if we begin by having them like on a quarterly basis and halves, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't want, I don't want to bore them.
Yeah, it was, it's actually more for, obviously, they know what they're getting into, right? Before they step up. So these would be people who are already in student government, most likely, people who are already considering going into community service, and they just want to get a little bit more of a feel for how it works. I mean, just imagine before your first meeting, if you'd already been to this boring meeting, right? And you learned about Robert's Rules and how the motions were made, how much better off you would be. And a lot of it, and they also, they did discuss things too, guys, like in this, with not, not a lot of detail, so I'd have to do a little digging. But, you know, obviously, closed session, they would not be in closed session. We could even outline, you know, what they could have a vote, a vote on or what they would not have a vote on. But to have the student perspective, just look at the things that we've done just in my three years here. You know, I talked about having ROTC, no time, no space, no teachers, right? And then even the military folks said, we don't have people to send you. But then when the gentleman, when the student came, then, you know, kind of excited, did put a little catalyst in it, and now we're looking at JROTC. So, you know, that student, there are a lot of things that we've done based on student feedback at our meetings that we would have never heard about or wouldn't have advanced, may not have advanced without student input. So I thought it was an awesome idea. But yeah, just to look at a proposal, we don't have to just jump now and make a decision.
Yeah.
I mean, some of the, some of the best parts of our meetings that we've had in the past have been when students from, from the schools have come here and told us about things that they're, you know, have done or are doing that we may not hear about. But, but if we can incorporate that into the students', you know, multiple students' representatives on the board, I think it'd be great.
I think any opportunity to give juniors, seniors opportunities, even just for the public speaking part of it is a big deal. And, and so, and, and again, I don't think they're gonna have voting rights or anything like that, but just the opportunity and the engagement and, and I think we could make it work. So I would be glad to delegate that, and you seem pretty passionate about it. And come, like you said, come up with some ideas, a proposal and-
Dr. Wilson, did any, at Bedford County, did they have any at all?
No, they, they had an advisory board that would, that would meet, have student voices and advisory board, meet superintendent, but they didn't sit at the board meeting.
Right.
I don't know that they would actually have a seat at the table, but they would have an opportunity at each meeting maybe to speak. And again, maybe this, this month is Brookville, this month is William Campbell, you know? Again, ideas. And I believe that's all I have. I'm excited about our new elementary behavior and anything we can do to help these kids at the early stage so they can be successful to our benefit. Anything else? If not, then we don't have any. I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye and close your laptops.